Town Meeting Tonight in Town Hall, New York. Should the United States open its doors for displaced persons now? Here James G. McDonald, Paul H. Griffith, Frank Kingdom and Rudolph Reimer. Here both sides on Town Meeting Tonight.
Yes friends, we're back in Town Hall, New York. The home of America's Town Meeting of the Air for the 447th session of the nation's most popular radio forum. This is the Town Hall Trustee Night on America's Town Meeting and here in our audience are most of the forty representative Americans who are responsible for the policies and general program of this great center of adult education here in the heart of New York City. And to preside over our meeting, here is the founder and moderator of America's Town Meeting, the President of Town Hall, Mr. George V. Denny Jr. Mr. Denny.
Good evening neighbors. From time to time, a great many of you write in and ask us, "What is this Town Hall? Is it anything more than a radio program?" The answer is that the Town Hall is an educational institution, now in its fifty-second year, which has an extensive program of adult education, including morning lectures by outstanding authorities in nearly every field, late afternoon and evening short courses, in a variety of subjects, and America's Town Meeting of the Air, which it presents each week in association with the American Broadcasting Company. Town Hall is also a leading center of music. It's governed by a group of forty trustees headed by the former governor of New Jersey, the Honorable Charles Edison. There are forty public spirited citizens representative of all shades of political opinion who give generously of their time, talent and financial support to this institution. We are proud and happy to have so many of them with us here tonight. As warm-hearted human beings, I'm sure that we're all deeply concerned about tonight's question, "Should the United States open its doors to displaced persons now?" Mr. James G. McDonald, a member of the Anglo-American Committee of Inquiry and Colonel Paul Griffith, National Commander of the American Legion, hold opposing views on this subject. But I know that Mr. McDonald will not question Colonel Griffith's generous spirit any more than Colonel Griffith would question Mr. McDonald's Americanism. There's an honest difference of opinion as to what we, the people of the United States, should do about approximately a million displaced persons in Central Europe. Mr. Frank Kingdom, author and radio commentator, and Mr. Rudolph Reimer, former Commissioner of Immigration at Ellis Island, will be our special interrogators. The gentlemen, there are certain things we should know before we start this argument. And I'd like to ask Mr. Kingdom and Dr. Reimer to set us straight on these things before Mr. McDonald and Colonel Griffith start the argument. Mr. Kingdom, just who is a displaced person and what are President Truman's proposals regarding them?
Mr. Denny, I would define displaced persons this way. Displaced persons are those who have been uprooted from their homes for political or religious belief, who have no present homes and who cannot return to their former homes. They're on the loose because their old countries won't take them back, or because they fear death and persecution if they return. They are people without a country. President Truman has made three suggestions about them at different times. First, he proposed that all who could be admitted under the present quota system be admitted speedily. Second, he proposed that special immigration privileges be extended to some of them, particularly the children. Third, and this at the United Nations session the other day, he said, "I intend to urge the Congress of the United States to authorize this country to do its full part, both in financial support of the International Refugee Organization and in joining with other nations to receive those refugees who do not wish to return to their former homes for reasons of political and religious belief."
Thank you, Dr. Kingdom. Mr. Reimer, as the former Commissioner of Immigration at Ellis Island, perhaps you can tell us how many immigrants can be admitted yearly under our present law and if President Truman's proposal would require a change in this law? Mr. Reimer?
We can now admit one hundred and fifty thousand persons for permanent residence. There is no limit as to the number of people that can come here for temporary residence. Our laws are exceedingly liberal and we are most generous in our treatment of the aliens. All nations are jockeying for a place in the sun, and if the Europeans could send us their derelicts of humanity to take off their hands, they would do so and pray our generosity. It is a matter of record that European governments granted pardons or withheld prosecution if the accused would migrate. Where to? USA, of course. The only thing that we deny a naturalized citizen under our raw law is the right to become our president. Our laws are free, our laws are generous, we give them free schools, free libraries, free hospitals, free parks and free recreational facilities. We don't even charge anything if their house burns down. We put the fire out for them for nothing and they collect the insurance. Should I mention our practically five cent subway fare?
Right, thank you, Mr. Reimer. Now it seems to call for a statement of the first speaker, Mr. James G. McDonald, member of the Anglo-American Committee of Inquiry and former Chairman of President Roosevelt's Committee for Political Refugees. Mr. McDonald.
Thanks, George. Hello, Americans. I wish you could have been with me and my colleagues of the Anglo-American Committee of Inquiry when last February we visited scores of displaced persons camps in Central Europe. I wish you could have sensed as we did the courage and the worthwhileness of the men and women and children we met there. Despite the years of torture which they had suffered in the Nazi concentration camps, they were confidently planning new lives overseas. You would have felt, I am sure as I felt, that these displaced persons who had survived eight years of horror were the superb human materials of which great nations have been built. President Truman's proposal to relax the immigration restrictions in favor of displaced persons from Europe should be acted upon favorably. It is in the spirit of our historic and traditional American policy. It is a program which in varying forms continued from the beginning of our history as helped mightily to build America. It will permit Catholic, Protestant Jews, homeless victims of Nazi savagery, to aid us in developing our beloved America. Every consideration of true Americanism calls for nonpartisan enthusiastic support of the President's initiative. Happily, there are encouraging signs that such broad and powerful support will be forthcoming. The Governor of this state, Mr. Dewey, the titular head of the Republican Party, gave his approval to this American policy in an address delivered in New York City less than a month ago. He then said, "These victims of Hitler by their very status offer evidence of their love of freedom, of liberty and of free government. They should be welcome additions to all the great nations of the world. These people are the natural successors of the great waves of the persecuted who in the past contributed so richly to the greatness of the United States. It should not be difficult," continued Mr. Dewey, "with the support and goodwill of both parties in this country to adjust our own immigration laws to permit the admission of our share of displaced persons, both Christians and Jews." American organized labor, through its official spokesman in the CIO, the AFVL, voted recently for special adjustments to permit the admission of more of European displaced persons. The principle of asylum for the oppressed has always been one of our most cherished American policies. American leaders of all parties and in all periods in our history have so consistently supported it that America throughout the Western world has become synonymous with freedom, with the opportunity for pioneer men and women and their sturdied children to share in the most momentous movement of our time, the development on our continent of our great democracy. As a result, we Americans, all of us, except possibly the Indians, all of us are immigrants or the descendants of immigrants. Those who oppose President Truman's program admit, of course, that, as they must, that immigrants and their children have made America. But they argue that immigration is no longer needed now that we have become, as they allege, a mature nation. This argument that so-called maturity makes immigration unnecessary is as old as our country. The Indians, more than three hundred years ago, seemingly argued in a similar vein. "We occupy," they said in effect, "this continent. We need it all. There's no room for these white newcomers." To the Indians, the pilgrims were undesirable aliens. Little Americans in every stage of our history have argued that the country was mature and that the door should be closed to future immigration. Where, I wonder, would most of us, you who are listening and we who are speaking, be tonight if these little Americans had had their way and had closed the gate to this country one hundred seventy-five or fifty years ago? Our country was not mature then, it is not mature now. We need now as we needed then, the resources, the imagination, the initiative which newcomers can bring. This whole doctrine of national maturity is fallacious. It is defeated and it is therefore unworthy of Americans to have faith in the future of our country. But let's look for a minute or two at the record in this country of the refugees from Nazi terror who came to our shores from nineteen thirty-three to forty-four. They total approximately at most two hundred and seventy thousand. Their ready adjustment demonstrates that our country could easily absorb additional immigrants. Most of the newcomers came here in the pre-war years when jobs were less plentiful than now, but aided by the national agencies specializing in refugee adjustments, they soon made their own way in communities throughout the country where they found jobs alongside American workers. In significant instances, they set up businesses in non-competitive fields that gave employment in the manufacture of previously imported articles, for example, diamonds. Other immigrant-directed enterprises met new jobs in plants that as yet before lay idle. Here's one case. A sugar refiner who came to this country revived the economic life of one of our midwestern towns. He converted an old sugar mill closed for years into a corn products plant that gave work to one hundred of the town's three thousand inhabitants. It gave also a new outlet for the produce of the farmers in that region. Another example, in the Pacific Northwest, a refugee, a Polish industrial engineer, opened an unusual factory cooperatively owned by three hundred farmers. The first of its sort in this hemisphere, it makes dextrose syrup from cold potatoes, according to a secret process that the immigrant scientist had brought with him. The other night in Lawrence, Massachusetts, I met a former refugee who had come to this country five or six years ago, bringing with him the skill required to make a certain type of woolen sock which previously had to be imported largely from England. Now this new American is producing socks of a quality equal to the best imported brand and is giving employment to hundreds of old Americans. These examples, which could be modified many times, prove the falsity of the assumption that there is a limited amount of wealth or goods for distribution among our people and that therefore the greater number of newcomers, the smaller share each of us old Americans will have. The truth is precisely the reverse, for immigrants like other workers, scientists and businessmen add to the total assets of our country by helping create additional goods and additional wealth by their labor and their talent. Recently, according to reliable governmental calculation, it was estimated that every adult worker immigrating to our country represents a gain of five thousand dollars in capital value. On that basis, we can be sure that the United States has gained at least a billion dollars worth of trained workers and professional people and the refugees who have come to this country since nineteen thirty-three. But in addition, who can estimate the value of a Thomas Mann, perhaps the world's most distinguished writer, or of an Einstein and the other refugee scientists who played and are playing leading roles in developing atomic energy? I cannot believe that Colonel Griffith or anyone else tonight will seriously argue that because there are few unemployed, the lowest proportion in many years apiece, we must shut our doors to those who buy their industry and talent would help us to meet today's pressing needs for workers. I sympathize with the remnant of Hitler's victims and I desire to see them recreate their lives outside the Europe in which more than six million of their relatives were murdered. But my basic reason, and the one which I chiefly urge on you for supporting the President's proposed liberalization of our immigration laws, is my innerst capable conviction that the displaced persons, Catholics, Protestants, Jews, who come to us, will as new Americans help us old Americans who fulfill our country's highest destiny.
Thank you, James G. McDonald. Now it's our pleasure to welcome back to this platform the new National Commander of and the official spokesman for the American Legion, Colonel Paul H. Griffith of Uniontown, Pennsylvania. National Commander Griffith.
Dr. McDonald, that was a beautiful speech and one that will be welcomed by millions of people. I am informed there are about... I am informed there are about twenty million all over Europe who want to come to America. But the subject we are discussing here tonight, "Should the United States open its doors to displaced persons now," has two strings attached to it. They are our heartstrings and our purse strings. In other words, there are two approaches to the consideration of this question. On one side here tonight are the interests of an estimated eight hundred and fifty thousand to one million displaced persons in Central Europe to whom a charitable nation is asked to open its doors. On the other side are the interests of millions of Americans who also are displaced persons. They are displaced from homes, they are displaced from jobs, they are our own flesh and blood. The majority of these displaced Americans have a special claim upon us. They have earned it. They are our returned fighting men and women of World War II. There are probably four million of our own people tonight who are half housed, ill housed or actually unhoused. A shocking proportion of these is made up of homeless veterans. Their columns of agonizing want ads seeking any kind of shelter are to be found in every daily newspaper in America. There were two million seven hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred Americans actually seeking work, according to the unemployment compensation rolls, for the week of August seventeenth, nineteen forty-six. Of these, one million six hundred and forty-seven thousand four hundred were veterans. There still were a million two hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and sixteen veterans drawing unemployment compensation for the week of October fifth, nineteen forty-six. Decreased mobilization of the armed forces is not the only factor responsible for the four hundred thousand dropped in the number of veterans on the unemployment compensation rolls between August and October. Seasonal employment opportunities accounted for some, but many thousands of veterans are no longer on these rolls because they have exhausted their unemployment insurance credit. They still are out of work. This includes a shameful total running into many thousands of our disabled veterans. Dr. McDonald, surely you wouldn't classify these as little Americans? The proposal to admit displaced foreigners to our shores is a proposal to put them into competition with our homeless and jobless veterans for housing and for employment. These veterans are entitled to first consideration to homes and to jobs. The American Legion will not budge from its stand that Americas must come first in these respects. We are genuinely sympathetic with the plight of the distressed people of the world and we have given very clear evidence of our sympathy. We have materially aided in the rescue and preservation of countless of numbers within the occupied territories, provided interim relief and transportation to liberated areas, and aided in placing many thousands in other countries of asylum, as well as providing for the feeding and financing of refugees in neutral countries. In spite of what Dr. McDonald has said, our economic situation tonight is such that additional people will only increase our distress. We have just come through nearly five years when all of our production efforts were directed toward turning out the sinews of war. We have a dire shortage of consumer goods. Americans still cannot buy automobiles, refrigerators, new clothing and other commodities to satisfy even partial demand. Our reconversion to a peacetime economy continues to be a slow and painful process. The specter of inflation is hovering over it. For millions of Americans, the cost of living already has outstripped any increase in income. I can conceive of no more unwise action than to further add to our economic complications at this time than by admitting thousands of displaced persons from abroad to compete with us for housing, employment and consumer goods, even if they are competent to do so, or to add to our public wards if they are unable to do so. I cannot agree with Dr. McDonald that now is the time to bring in additional refugees and I question his statement that all of those who have come have been assimilated. There are other aspects to this entire question which should be examined. Immediately after the First World War, we faced an immigration problem similar in nature to the problem we face today. We allowed them to come in too fast. Within the decade from nineteen twenty-one to nineteen thirty, a total of four and a half quarter million immigrants came to this country. It was because of this situation that we have our present immigration quotas. The main reason we put up immigration bars was to restrict the flow from substandard countries. Naturally, there has been constant pressure to amend our immigration laws to death. In nineteen hundred and forty alone, there were five hundred bills in Congress on immigration. Of these, four hundred and seventy-five proposed to relax the Immigration Act in some way or other. To relax our immigration laws now is to invite a flood tide of immigrants. If we admit displaced persons, the next drive will be to admit their relatives and others. There will be no end to it. Neither does the argument hold water that many of these immigrants would be assets to our economy. If they are valuable workers and producers, no country needs them as much as their own. Half of Europe is in ruin. Skilled artisans and men with trained minds are the crying need of all the war-devastated nations. That is a job for many years to come. Finally, why should the United States head to list when havens of refuge are sought? There are other great undeveloped countries in the world where free lands and frontier still exist. Africa is a vast continent in need of development. The Australian Prime Minister and the former Governor General of New Zealand have already indicated their desire to expand by encouraging immigration of many millions. South America is another land of opportunity, almost equaling the United States in attraction. There are others which have not suffered the dislocations of war as we have. At its recent San Francisco National Convention, the American Legion adopted a resolution which requested the President of the United States to suspend by executive order, or the Congress of the United States to restrict by appropriate legislation all quota immigration on the basis of the National Origin Act, as well as displaced refugee immigration until January one, nineteen hundred and forty-eight. The firm stand of the American Legion is that until homes are found for all Americans, until our unemployment problem is solved, until the foreigners legally and illegally here are assimilated, until we are sure those already here do not imperil our way of life and our national security, there should be no further immigration permitted.
Thank you, National Commander Griffith. Just in passing, wouldn't it be interesting if a few of our leading candidates for public office of opposing parties meet together and discuss the common problems the way Mr. McDonald and Colonel Griffith have actually grappled with the same issues here tonight? It's too bad they don't do it. Now to help clarify this dilemma, let's have the analysis of our special interrogators. First, Mr. Frank Kingdom, author, radio commentator and Chairman of the National Citizens Political Action Committee. Mr. Kingdom.
Commander Griffith says that this is a question which involves heartstrings and purse strings. All right, I speak for the heartstrings. And I'm very glad to do it in this case because there is no conflict between the heartstrings and the purse strings. The two strings harmonize to play a perfect theme. We haven't finished the war against Hitler until we have provided homes and new homes for the first and most pitiful victims of Hitler. Now Commander Griffith says that we have to choose between taking these people in and providing proper homes for our veterans and for other Americans. I don't believe it. We can do both. I don't believe that the selfish interests which have been manipulating things in this country for their own greed to prevent housing ought to be allowed to have their own way in this country. And I certainly don't believe that their obstructionist tactics in this country ought to be made an excuse by anybody for not doing the decent thing for people overseas. The government should assert its leadership, draw these greedy people into line, take care of American housing and give moral leadership to the world on the displaced persons issue. Now the Commander says they'll add to our economic problem. They won't? For four years now, we haven't been taking in the number of immigrants that our laws allow us to take. We could greatly relieve the displaced person situation by admitting just as many as we would have had if our immigration quotas had been functioning normally over the past four years. There's no increase in the problem that is created by the already existing law. And let me say that when Commander Griffith invites these people to return to their own countries, he is inviting them to return to persecution and death. I quite agree that other countries should take some of these people. It is a world problem, but we are the richest and most powerful country in the world. Let us set the example. Don't let try and... Don't let try and pass the buck to somebody else. Let's do the decent thing and then invite other countries to become our partners in doing the decent thing with us. Now, now for the question. Commander Griffith, there are a million displaced persons loose in Europe who have no homes and no country. What specifically do you propose to do for them?
This country has been, ever since the end of hostilities, conducting or helping to conduct an agency known as UNRWA. Seventy-five percent of the support that's been given to UNRWA has been given by the United States for the purpose of helping to take place of these displaced people. Now if that's not going to do something for them, then we're wasting our money and our efforts with UNRWA. And if we're setting up peace conferences and discussing peace merely for the purpose of finding out how we can bring more people to America and not for the purpose of finding out how we can cause everyone to live in peace throughout the world, I believe it's been a waste of our effort.
I'm sorry Commander, but I don't think that you've answered my question. Let's agree that, uh... Let's agree that UNRWA is doing something in the feeding of these people, but there's a deeper problem. They've got to have homes, they've got to have roofs, they've got to have security. Otherwise, there are floating social problems that will irritate the European scene until it becomes a factor in a new outbreak. What are you going to do to give these people stability and security in the European community?
I believe that's your question and my answer was given in my original talk, that until we provide homes and until we provide for the people that we have here in America, that we ought to take care of them through UNRWA or through some other agency. But we must take care of our own veterans here and we haven't done it regardless of what the good doctor says.
I'll fight as hard as the Commander or anybody else to see that we take care of the housing of our veterans in this country. That is a disgrace that lies at the door of a greedy industry. Let's take care of that job in the same way. But here's the point, the National Commander represents a group of men who have had to fight overseas. A million displaced persons wandering around Europe constitute a social irritation. That irritation may very well inflame the European scene to further difficulties and perhaps even be a factor in creating another war. Isn't it better Commander, to do something, even at sacrifice, for these people now than to leave them as a possible factor in the creation of another war which will involve sending our men overseas to die?
I have to insist on answering... I have to insist on answering the question that they're no more of a problem than four million displaced veterans in America seeking homes and seeking help from their government.
We don't seem to be able to dispose of that question entirely, but now it's time for the comments and questions by our other interrogator, Mr. Rudolph Reimer of Brooklyn, New York, former Commissioner of Immigration at Ellis Island. Mr. Reimer.
When I heard Dr. McDonald's address, it was a splendid one. I thought it was a beautiful political speech made by someone running for Congress in the Brownsville District of Brooklyn where I was born. In paragraph one of his speech, he talks about the homeless Catholics, Protestants, and Jews can now come under our very liberal law. We need no modification of the laws to let them in. His statement would infer that they could not come. In his second paragraph, his statement would have... would have been more accurate if he had said that these people are the natural successors of the persecuted in the past who were so generously received in the United States. Governor Dewey's support is coming from a person seeking election. Well, let's be fair. He's a candidate for election. However, I tell him if any chapter of the American Federation of Labor would chip in to bring more skilled mechanics to the United States in spite of any resolution that they might have passed en masse, my heart, my person, my checkbook goes out to the unfortunate folk of Europe. But there is nothing in our Constitution which even hints at an obligation toward people of other countries who cannot get along with our government. It's a personal matter. It's a personal matter if you wish to join the Tolstoy Fund. Paragraph six, I agree with the gentleman that immigrants have built up this country. But admit, Mr. McDonald, that he came here to better his own financial position or his political standing and for no other reason. I resent being dubbed a little American. I gave years of my life at a sacrifice to clean up the island, and I know the aliens. We can have... I might read this telegram here with your permission, sir, from the American Legion. "We advocate returning all refugees to land of origin, now making available three hundred thousand apartments for American veterans, the pre-war tenants." Signed, the American Legion. American Veterans... American Veterans Legion. Let me correct it. American Veterans Legion.
Well, what is this called? It's signed, "American Veterans Legion." There's no name attached to it. All right. Wait a minute.
One year... One man, some years ago, and two horses could plow ten acres of land. Now one man and a tractor can plow fifty acres of land in a day. So when they say we need more men, our machinery that we have here in America is handling that problem. He speaks of the two hundred and seventy thousand refugees who have come to the United States since nineteen thirty-three and who have been absorbed. I tell you that many of them have earned their living by the sweat of the jaw and pushing a pen, limited only by the amount of ink in the bottle.
Thank you, Mr. Reimer. Now, have you some questions for Mr. McDonald? Mr. Reimer? Right here. You have questions for Mr. McDonald?
No, I have no question for Mr. McDonald. I thought Mr. McDonald was going to question me, challenge me.
Well, Mr. McDonald will probably like to challenge some of the remarks you've made about his speech. Mr. McDonald?
Good. Uh, may I be permitted to ask Mr. McDonald a question? If, uh, an immigrant is worth five thousand dollars to this country, wouldn't why not give him five thousand dollars when he arrives if he's worth so much?
Well, we give him the opportunity to make his living is what... is what he wants. He doesn't want five thousand dollars. He wants an opportunity to become a part of America. Just as your ancestors wanted that opportunity. Just as my grandparents wanted that opportunity. That's worth infinitely more to him than five thousand dollars. Very well.
Now, Mr. McDonald, would you care to comment on some of the comments that Mr. Reimer has made on your speech?
Well, I'd like to suggest in the first place that I wish I had the honor of being a candidate for Congress from Brownsville in Brooklyn. In the... in the second place... In the second place, I would like to suggest that candidates for office cannot be impugned with dubious motives merely because they are running for office. Election campaigning is an integral part of the American system. Hence, I take seriously Governor Dewey's statement the other night of his attitude. That's all.
Well, I thank you both very much, and I know you could carry this on all night, but let's pause briefly for station identification. Yes, friends, you're listening to America's Town Meeting of the Air, coming to you from Town Hall, New York, where we're discussing the subject, "Should the United States Open Its Doors to Displaced Persons Now?" For your convenience, a complete copy of tonight's discussion is printed in a small, pocket-sized pamphlet, which you may receive by sending your request to Town Hall, New York eighteen, New York, and in closing, ten cents to cover the cost of printing and mailing. If you would like to have these Town Meeting bulletins come to you regularly each week, enclose one dollar for eleven weeks, two dollars thirty-five cents for six months, or four dollars and a half for an entire year. And now to conduct our question period, here is our moderator, Mr. Denny.
Thank you. Now continuing our incentive system to encourage good questions, we are offering a United States savings bond that costs us eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents, but will be worth twenty-five dollars to you ten years from now if you ask a question which, in the opinion of our committee of judges, does more than the others among those asked to bring out new facts and broaden the scope of our discussion. Your questions must be limited to twenty-five words. The judge's decision is final, and the judges reserve the right to make no award if they should so decide. Now, questions, please. We start with gentlemen over here on the aisle.
My name is David Wayne. I'm a teacher in New York City's high school. If we must accept your point of view, how can we honestly educate American youth to look upon America as a refuge for your press?
Well, I don't... I don't believe that question can be answered with regard to the subject we're discussing here. You accept my point of view. You'll show that this country is a nation that is grateful to men who have gone out to fight two wars to allow freedom to live in the world. And my argument is that until they're taken care of in America, we don't have room to take care of anymore.
Thank you. The young lady over here.
Dr. McDonald, my name is Beatrice Sodaski. I'm in the transportation business. Can the U.N. be empowered to allocate quotas of displaced persons throughout the world? And would that be a feasible way to ameliorate the problem?
The answer to the question is that it might be a feasible way if the United Nations had the power. It does not have it.
Thank you. Uh, yes. Oh, come on, Miss Kingdom.
Uh, I think the point you have to bear in mind about that is that the admission of immigrants to a country is a matter of internal policy within that country. Therefore, the admission of immigrants would have to be decided independently of any United Nations action by each nation acting as an individual sovereign power. The United Nations couldn't make the decision.
Thank you. Uh, the lady right here.
Mr. Reimer.
Mr. Reimer here.
Mr. Reimer, the questioner is Alice Benham of Rye and Manhattan. If our government spends half as much on housing as it spends for military purposes, could it not house our returning soldiers and many refugees?
It... it possibly could. We have allocated now eight hundred million dollars for the UNRWA, and we're operating, in conjunction with other nations, various ports, so-called free ports, in Europe.
Thank you. Colonel Griffith wanted to...
I think I should be allowed to say something in reply to that question, that it isn't a matter of allocating money comparable to that which we... which we allocate in order to preserve our freedom. The idea is that there isn't material enough in this country available to build these houses.
That's a correct statement. I would, uh... this is Frank Kingdom. I'd like to challenge that statement. There is, uh... There is so much material lying idle all over this country that is being completely unused merely because the industry is holding it back for a higher price.
I challenge that statement. It is not correct. There is not enough material in this country to finish the houses that have already been started. And regardless of your attitude, there isn't enough soil pipe or window sash or finish in this country to complete the homes that are standing in my home community where veterans are waiting to move in to get out of the winter weather.
I... I believe we can't settle that question. It's a question of a dispute of fact between two gentlemen. And the best we can do, I don't know whether you both will be satisfied with this or not, but the best we can do is to try to resolve that dilemma by a statement from the National Housing Administrator next week. Would that be all right? Yes. Yes, come along right here.
I'd just like the doctor to give us the location of the material so that when we're going to the government to try to solve this home question for veterans, we know where the material is.
Kingdom, do you want to tackle that one?
Yes, I'd be very glad to. I just suggest that the National Commander call up the nearest lumberyard.
Well, quite seriously, we'll try to resolve this next week by giving you a report from the National Housing Administrator, Mr. Wilson Wyatt. If he's listening in, I hope he will send us the proper information. Now, the gentleman standing in the center there, yes?
My name is John Philman. Mr. Kingdom, what message would you suggest to assimilate those displaced persons consisting of about two million people coming to the country?
How do you suggest assimilating those displaced persons?
As I take it, there are about a million displaced persons in Europe. As I've said before, it's a world problem. It's a problem that should be dealt with by all the nations. I'm not suggesting, and Mr. McDonald is not suggesting, that the United States takes the whole million. What we are suggesting is that the United States makes a plain state offer that it will take a number comparable to those taken by other countries so that all the nations acting together can absorb the entire million.
Do you want to comment on that, Commander?
I'll have to say to the doctor that we're doing more than that now.
Thank you.
Why do you shed crocodile tears for the veterans? When your own organization condemns all veterans' housing grounds as communistic in your own American Legion budget?
That is not a true statement.
We're having an awfully hard time here disposing of this question of veracity. I wish you would recall, however, that the National Commander Griffith here is the official spokesman for the American Legion, and it stands on what he said. Now, the, uh... I think we better go to the balcony here. But before we go to the balcony, Mr. McDonald, here's a question that was wired in to you. Mr. McDonald, uh, is it fair to permit more immigration while our veterans are housed on garbage dump in Queens? Signed, C.A. Maguire, Jamaica Avenue, New York.
I'd always assumed that Queens is a model borough of this great city, so I'm inclined to question the accuracy of the telegram. But assuming that it is true, my answer is that there is no necessary connection whatsoever between the bungle which has been made of housing here, whether because of the responsibility attributed to the industry by my friend, Dr. Kingdom, or for other reasons. There's no necessary connection whatsoever between this bungling and the proposal to admit these few additional displaced persons.
Right.
Dr. Kingdom, in your interrogation, do you feel that you've gone far enough? How can veterans get housing when strikes, instigated frequently by non-veterans, stop this effort? Isn't this up to the administration?
That's almost off the subject, but go ahead.
Well, I think perhaps you didn't hear what I said. What I said was that the government should assert its authority, take the present housing situation in the United States out of its present bungle and do something about it, and also take care of this problem of the displaced person.
Thank you. The young man in the bathroom, yes? Quite so sad. We're getting...
My question is, does Mr. McDonald... Would all these people fight an extra burden and have already overworked and underpaid educators for the reasons that wouldn't they settle?
McDonald? Yes, that wouldn't these people mean an extra burden on the educational facilities where they would settle?
The answer to my young friend from the high school of science in the Bronx is that it would not constitute a burden a toll beyond the capacity of our educational system. Let me explain. These displaced persons coming to the United States do not settle down in a lump and become a congested, unassimilated mass. On the contrary, through Catholic, Protestant, and Jewish agencies specializing in the distribution of displaced persons in this country, they are widely and wisely distributed throughout the whole country where they can be assimilated most easily and where they can make the best contribution.
Uh, uh, wait just a minute. This is a very nice audience, and you're participating very nicely, but there's someone over there who is not playing the game according to rules. And I'm going to ask him to please remember that one person in the audience speaks at a time. If he's recognized, I'd be glad to hear it. Yes?
My name is Mark Alexander. I'm an attorney. Mr. Reimer, are you willing, as a good American...
Right. Give it to me again, will you?
Right. Are you willing, as a good American, to see thousands of displaced persons destroyed where they now are? And if not, what would you do about it?
I wouldn't like to see thousands of displaced persons destroyed where they now are. But I challenge whether it is an obligation on my part as a citizen of the United States. I go by the Constitution of the United States, and it does not tell me that I must go to another country, a foreign country, and say zip...
Thank you. Miss Kingdom wants to get in on this, yes?
I've always interested to have the Constitution. This isn't a constitutional matter. This is a legislative matter. The Congress and the Senate have power under the Constitution, the past laws, which can make this act impossible. There's nothing unconstitutional suggested here by anybody.
Thank you. The gentleman on the aisle.
The resolution adopted at your San Francisco Convention regarding problems of refugees and suicide...
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir. The resolution passed on housing was... The pass on housing was that the National Commander immediately appoint a committee of seven World War II men to study the problem of housing, to consider men only who could devote their full time to the Washington, D.C. on November fourth, where they would interview all government and business people interested or that had to do with the housing problem, and bring a program to the National Executive Committee in November... in November so that as a result of their findings in that program, we might do something legislatively about the housing program.
Thank you. The lady down here.
This is William Wyther. Would not the displaced persons' problem have been avoided if the Immigration Act of nineteen twenty-four were based upon the census of nineteen ten instead of eighteen ninety?
The point about that, of course, is that census based on, immigration quota based on the census of eighteen ninety gives far larger recognition to the so-called Northern European countries, while the one based on nineteen ten would have given larger recognition, that would have meant larger quotas for the Southern European countries. If the present quota law had been based on the census of nineteen ten rather than eighteen ninety, it would have admitted more of these groups that we are now discussing.
Thank you. That's Neil and Rex Robinson, who sometimes substitute for me here as a sister, as guest moderator. And Miss Robinson is active in refugee work here in the Central. Miss Robinson, we may have fifteen seconds on a twenty-five word brief.
During the war years, over one percent of our immigration workers were not used by the Committee of Honor. During these years, something like two hundred thousand more people would have been admitted to our foundation, places where displaced people principally originate, if these victims of persecution and war had been able to return to us, but they crowded on the quota lapse. Now, Mr. Reimer, the question for you is, would you back Congress admitting at least this number of displaced persons, two hundred thousand, in addition to current quotas so they could start life anew in our country? Why not?
No. The answer is no. I would not. When the quota, when the quota lapses, it lapses.
Mr. Colonel Griffith?
May I just say this, that during those war years, when the quota was not filled, it was not filled because it was not possible for many of them to come to this country due to the fact that the ships were used in taking twelve million of our boys over there in order to liberate them and to preserve their life. And, and I want to state, just in connection with that, that we are not against the immigration of these people into this country. The question is, should the immigration laws be relaxed now? And that's what we are getting. Keep it in mind.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald?
I'd like to call attention to the fact that Miss Robinson's suggestion that the unfilled quarters of the war years should now be made available is precisely the suggestion which the American Federation of Labor made formally at its last convention.
Thank you. The lady over here in the brown hat.
I am Dellette Shulman from Brooklyn. I'm in charge of an office. Mr. Griffith, if the American Legion is as wonderful as you claim it is protecting the interests of our veterans, why was there a new organization of young men formed under the American Veterans Association?
I'm sorry. Let me answer this one question. Why do we have different denominations among our religious groups?
Thank you. Please keep your questions on the subject. The captain in the box, yes?
My name is Mark Paul. The gentleman being converted into a civilian.
Address to Commander Griffith, since most of the displaced persons are chargeable to small quotas, what is your basis of saying we are doing enough now, particularly since UNRWA is going out?
I just said a moment ago that there's no discussion here about the existing quota. Neither does the American Legion oppose them. The American Legion is opposed to relaxing our laws now to increase them.
Thank you. Put that down for this man here, yes?
Doctor McDonald, I should really ask the bottom line of this question. Will you believe that the opening remarks of Mr. Reimer will be of the tradition of the Town Hall?
Uh, well, no, I'm sorry. That is not the kind of question that can be answered or should be asked. I want to thank our friends for asking.
May I reply to that just a moment or not?
Uh, all right, Mr. Reimer.
Uh, Dr. McDonald and I are old friends. We've known him. I have known him in Brooklyn, and he has taken no offense at anything that I have said because he knew that I was going to say it.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. McDonald and the National Commander Griffith are going to prepare their summaries for tonight's question, and here's Mr. Douglas Browning with news of next week's topic.
The Paris Peace Conference is over. The treaties with six European legions have been drawn, subject to the approval of the Council of Foreign Ministers. But the biggest question of all remains before us, what to do with Germany? With a nation which has been the birthplace of two world wars within a single generation, what to do with a defeated nation divided into four parts, which is even now a major battleground conflicting ideologies? Next week, H.B. Carstenborn, Dean of American Commandators, Joseph Alsop, syndicated columnist and Thorne Clapham in the Fourteenth Authority, both of whom have recently returned from Germany, William L. Dyer, author of Berlin Diary and widely known authority on Germany, and Colonel Bernard Bernstein, a former financial advisor to General Eisenhower, who will be our speakers next week, when our subject will be, How Can We Make a Lasting Peace with Germany? Now for the summaries of tonight's question, Should the United States Open Its Doors to Displaced Persons Now? Here's our moderator, Mr. Denny.
And here's National Commander Paul Griffith with his summary for the negatives.
There was and is no easy solution for the fate of Europe's homeless region. That statement is not original with me. It is a quotation from a foreign poem of December nineteen forty-five to which Dr. McDonald wrote the foreword. We are agreed that there should be direct attention given to the plight of the displaced persons of Europe, but we must face the facts. We are not advocating a departure from the historic attitude of the United States as a haven for the oppressed. Our door is still open. The demand for a wider opening must be considered in the light of our obligation to our war veterans and to the displaced workers of America. We must think not only of the solution to this problem, we must give some thought to the reason for it. Does the Iron Curtain of Russia hide the solution to this problem? Has Stalin overlooked the plight of these people? Or does Russia, in its desire to spread communism, leave us more confused as to this solution? The United States must not be the only nation of the world to consider this problem.
Thank you, Colonel Griffith. And now, Mr. James G. McDonald with a final word for the affirmative. Mr. McDonald?
As argued in effect, that until every American has a house and a job to his liking, our country's doors must be hermetically sealed against the displaced persons. I ask you to consider what the exclusionist rule, this one, if applied throughout our history would have meant. Hardly any of us, either we on this platform or you listening, would be Americans. The door of opportunity would have been locked against our forefathers. Colonel Griffith's exclusionist rule would have stifled our country in its infancy. It would retard its growth now. No, the highest standards of helpfulness combined with the highest standards of national self-interest would dictate that we open our doors to our fair share of displaced persons so that, fully devoted to our American ideals, will help us mold our country ever nearer to our hearts' desires.
Thank you, Dr. McDonald, Frank Kingdom, Colonel Griffith, and Mr. Reimer. Now, our Committee of Judges informs me that tonight's winning question is, what method would you suggest to assimilate those displaced persons coming to this country? No name was signed, but if the person who asked the question will come up, they'll get the bond. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
How can we make a lasting peace with Germany? Town meeting next week.